All right, the time is seven ten. I'm calling this Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order. Those of you that are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Official meeting notification, Mr. Stausland.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the GSDWI.org website as well as Cable Access Channel ninety-six.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Reineman.
Medved.
Here.
Barney, absent, excused. Reineman here. Sotterberg.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Pollak.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
So, have you discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Item three, report, student representative report.
Yes, we have Hannah DeGrace from the high school will present the report, and Hannah recently represented the swim team at state where they placed fifth overall, which is the highest placing they've ever done at state, so.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
All right, so Amy Bell's parent teacher conferences were a great success. The staff will again incorporate character traits into the students' learning. They'll focus on activities that allow students to practice gratitude. The PTA also hosted an online shop with Milwaukee Makers Booster Event from Monday, November first to Friday, November twelfth. Approaches of a portion of the proceeds went back to Amy Bell. County Line has a fun-filled month coming up. Students have the opportunity to purchase popcorn for fifty cents on every first and third Wednesday. The whole school celebrated fall with fall parties. Additionally, students took time to learn about Veterans Day. This week, the third graders will be participating in a virtual Milwaukee Symphony Concert. On November twenty-third, the kindergartners will have an ABC Fashion Show. Coming up in December, the PTA Snowball will be held on the tenth and offer students an opportunity to make fun crafts. Rockfield continues to learn about character values. This month's character value is gratitude. Students learn what gratitude means and reflect on things they are grateful for. For Veterans Day, students learned about Veterans Day, and some students made cards and sent them off to local veterans. The teachers have been reviewing the new writers workshop materials, and some classrooms started the units of study last week. Others will begin by January. The Rockfield PTA continues to support the school in many ways. Last month, they brought back the annual Rocktoberfest, which was a hit. MacArthur has had a very busy yet exciting month. Parent-teacher conferences allow staff and parents to collaborate in order to assist scholars in achieving their goals both socially and academically. From now until fall break, the students will have opportunities to participate in Fun Spirit Days. With assistance from counselor Ashley Voturo, the MAC leaders led a very successful senior bingo night. There were over three hundred attendees, and many community businesses gave donations for prizes. In addition, the concept of a growth mindset was introduced to all students. MacArthur announced the members of the three Destination Imagination teams and that they have already started working on completing their challenges for their regional tournament in March. Students were invited to participate in a spelling bee, and those practices start this week. The PTA hosted one of the biggest book fairs ever. Additionally, the PTA wants to remind everyone to participate in the Box Top Program, where you can now download an app and scan your receipts from MacArthur to gain credit. KMS students and staff wrapped up the first quarter and continued to work hard as they begin quarter two. Teachers reported that virtual conferences with parents at the beginning of November went very well. Students are now allowed to enter Kennedy Middle School starting at seven AM, where they can report to either the cafeteria for breakfast or the Blue Gym until seven-ten AM, where they will be dismissed to their classroom for first hour. Additionally, after-school activities such as the KMS Cheer Team, AV Club, After-School Study Skills, Best Buddies, FBLA, and Young Writers Club are a great way for students to get involved. Currently, the Junior Key Club is hosting a food drive to benefit Saint Boniface and Saint Gabriel, and that goes until the sixteenth of November. Germantown High School welcomed new members of National Honor Society at the induction ceremony that was held in the PAC. It was livestreamed to families, other students, and staff so that everyone could celebrate the new inductees. Many students will be awarded for their academic achievements on the sixteenth. Spanish Honor Society will induct its new members on November eighteenth this month. NHS is holding their annual blood drive on the nineteenth. Germantown High School was honored with the WIAA Award of Excellence. The GHS Athletic Program was recognized for the areas of sportsmanship, ethics, integrity, leadership, and character. On November tenth, many athletes signed their national letters of intent to continue their academics and sports at the collegiate level. The girls volleyball team were regional champions. The boys team made it to sectionals. The football team made it to the playoffs. And finally, the Germantown Girl Swim and Dive Team earned first place at their sectional meet and fifth place at state this past weekend.
Hannah, congratulations and nice job. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do. Does anyone have any questions for Hannah?
No, just thank you very much for bringing all this good news forward.
We do appreciate your updates.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item B, back-to-school report, Mr. Stausland.
So, just a couple of slides once again on where we are with area COVID numbers. And you can see we've gone up a little bit, and this is again, this is the community rates. So, in certain municipalities, it's gone up a little bit. Other ones, it's actually gone down. The school transmission level is what we focus in on a little more. And you can see, you know, we were stayed about steady for three weeks there from October twenty-second to November twelfth. Other schools in the area are starting to drop as well. So, we'll again, we continue to monitor these numbers. And then, this is our, just a snapshot off our dashboard. And sometimes the dashboard, and I mentioned this before, but sometimes, like you would have on Tuesday, the ninth might have showed two people, but then by Friday, it shows three people on that same day, and it's because the student went to get tested and becomes positive. We date back to the point the person showed symptoms or left to go ill. So, it is, it does fluctuate at times, but in general, our purpose for this really is to just see where we're trending. And one thing that I always look at every morning is to see, you know, where we are. Are we under one percent at all our schools? And we have been, we peaked at, not peaked, but we had some high numbers at County Line for a while. But those have now or since come down. And like I said, we just, we continue to monitor and we'll pivot if we need to on this. I noticed that West Bend, one of their schools just went virtual because they had kind of huge numbers that went through their building. So, again, that's why we monitored to see how we're doing. But my principals are very good about letting me know where they are even before the dashboard shows anything. And I put this next slide in here as back to school, and I mentioned this a couple of staff meetings ago or board meetings ago, is that, for whatever reason, and you hear the great report that Hannah just did. There's so many really, really excellent things that are going on in our schools, and that's by the majority of our kids. And there's, but for whatever reason, we're almost double the amount of misbehaviors that have been in our schools. And mainly, elementary is about the same, but it's middle school, high school, where we've seen much more. And we don't, we don't know why. We don't, and other schools are seeing the same thing. And in some sense, it doesn't matter why, we just know what's happening. But, you know, this last week, some racially insensitive words used at an elementary school, other harmful language, and just what I call unkind behaviors. This district traditionally does not have a lot of fights. They've had more fights in the first two months than sometimes in a whole year. Our, the standard of behavior in our district is extremely high. And you compare it to other districts, it's there. And when we know of things that happen, we're on it, and there's consequences. And it's, we're, like I said, but the amount that we're seeing is, it's still not in the majority of kids. This is still, you know, a small portion of kids, but it's causing us to rethink kind of how we do business. And just some of the non-compliance, we don't know if it's influences social media or whatever it is, but it's that it doesn't matter, it's happening. Us behaviors, you know, continue, but they've, it's come down a little bit than how it was the beginning of the year. And I look at this kind of in a three-pronged solution, and it's education, consequences, and parent support. And for the December meeting, I'm going to bring back a draft plan to address some of these things and focusing really on the middle school and high school. And not just a one-and-done plan, but that's something that would take us. There's so many topics that can be addressed in our schools that need attention. So, hopefully, the plan, you know, will touch on all of those. But at the base of all this is just be decent, respectful, kind human beings, and we'd have a better place. It sounds simple, but for whatever reason, we're struggling through that, but we're willing to address it. And if not, the consequences is our last resort. But they work to, and we use them when we have to. And we put more kids on pre-expulsion and expulsion than any district around here because of our high standard of what's acceptable. So, any questions on any of this?
Just one, what is non-compliance?
Like if they're saying, if a teacher might be saying, look, we need you guys to go clear the lunchroom because where something's going on, and people, kids might say, no, I'm not doing it. So, just flat-out refusal to do something is non-basic non-compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I'll just comment that I think the board works really hard, and behavior issues are definitely not something we would ever sweep under the rugs. We take things very seriously. We've got a lot of reports in the last year from a lot of parents about a lot of issues, and we dig into all of them. We don't ignore those issues, and we expect that there will be consequences for those students. Unfortunately for us, we can't come back to you and say what we've done, how we've done it, because we're dealing with kids and we're dealing with minors. And the privacy issues that we're dealing with dictate that we cannot share what we're doing necessarily, even up to and including an expulsion. So, just to let you know, we are taking everything seriously in the action plan that we're coming up with. I think we will introduce publicly and have it vetted publicly. We're not looking for a canned program that somebody else is dictating to us. We want to come up with our own program to address our own issues and our own circumstances and make Germantown the best that we can be.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item C, virtual charter school update.
Yes, and I have the two Marines here, Marine and Marine. You have to have, your name has to be Marine to be on the committee. But before they talk about the virtual charter school, one thing I just, I want to explain is that typically a charter school begins because there's a group of parents who have a strong interest to do something a little different than what's normally happening in school. And so, you have this base of parents who are passionate and invested into this, into a charter school. Our process has been, not to say backwards, but a little different. Where the district, we noticed and recognized the need, because we were losing kids to virtual schools, that we wanted to look into this, and that was purpose of writing the grant, and now we're in the planning year. So, we've been soliciting people to be on, to be the parent advisory board for the for the virtual charter school. And we do have several people that have stepped up and are here tonight to talk about it. And they'll explain some of the other people that have expressed interest, as well as if anyone else has an interest of being part of it, how they can. So, I'll hand it over to Marine. Mike? Is Heather up there, Brenda?
Yep.
Yeah.
But we need this, Mike.
It should be working. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great, thank you so much. So, good evening. My name is Maureen Hager. I'm joined along with Maureen Fitzgerald, and we are here to talk about the charter school, the Germantown Virtual School. So, I just wanted to go through a little bit about the, we are both part of the governance board. We've had one meeting. We meet the third Thursday of every month virtually. And we're going to go through a little bit at the end as well. But anyone's welcome to those meetings, and we're going to explain at the end how to get information. So, we're just going to go through a little bit. We're going to go through each of the current governance board members. So, the president of the board is Carrie Rowe. And Brenda O'Brien had reached out to Carrie last year because she had some questions about some different virtual options. Her son is currently learning virtually. So, she expressed interest in serving on the board and has also attended the Charter School Conference this past summer. We also have Cindy Collins. So, she's the Germantown School Virtual Coordinator. So, many of you may recognize her name, you know, as part of the school district here at the high school. But she reached out to several families, students that were attending virtual schools to really seek interest on the board. And unfortunately, she didn't receive any responses. So, both Cindy and Brenda started reaching out to different individuals. So, they reached out to, Maureen Brock was recruited, and so she, she's got four daughters in the elementary and middle schools, and she's always been a real proponent of education for every kind of learner. So, she sees the virtual platform as a very valuable offering for our school district. I was contacted by Cindy Collins really for my work. I currently, my job, I work for a nonprofit called STEM Forward. And so, we work with K through twelve students to get them excited about STEM, as well as my background, marketing, communications, sales, business development, and leadership. So, I was kind of tapped into, I work with a lot of businesses and then a lot of schools and helping those partnerships form. And then also, Scott Parsons was tapped. He actually works for Train, and he expressed interest. He's got a partnership with Train and the Germantown School District, and he serves the Germantown School area as well in his job. I forgot to mention too, I'm also a parent. I have three boys, and all three went through K through twelve through Germantown, and all graduated. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the other Maureen.
Another board member is Leslie Fee, who's a developmental specialist at JW Speaker. And since our district has a longstanding partnership with JW Speaker, she was asked if she would be interested in serving on the board, and she said she would. Leslie's been a guest speaker in classrooms throughout the district, teaching students about design thinking and other processes that they use over at JW Speaker. Russ Ewart joined the first governance board meeting on October twenty-first. After that meeting, he reached out to Brenda and Carrie and expressed some interest in joining the board. He sees the opportunities that this type of alternative program could provide current students, as well as providing a financial boost to the district, which is important, while potentially attracting new students and their families into the district. He has three children in the district, two in elementary and one in Kennedy Middle School. He then talked to me and put me in contact with Carrie. I was interested because I am a former educator, taught in a classroom for eight years, and then I was an instructional coach at Elm Brook School District for five years. I am currently homeschooling my junior, so I felt like this would be a good fit, and I might have some insight that maybe some other parents didn't. So, at the November meeting, which is again, the third Thursday of each month, we'll be discussing and possibly adopting the bylaws, depending on how that meeting goes. And that will outline the operations of the governance board, so we haven't done that yet. We do invite everybody to please sit in on the meeting. We are looking for as much help as we can get. This is not by any chance, by any means, a closed thing. We would love the community to be involved, to have their voices heard. So, the best way to stay up to date with the agenda, the meetings, notes afterwards, is to go to the Germantown School District website. There's a GVS tab, Germantown Virtual School tab on the right-hand side. And if you click that, that gives you access to quite a bit of information. Do you have any questions?
I just want to thank the both of you for coming forward and for your service. Be careful what you ask for, but I think it's going to be very rewarding for you and the other members of the governance committee. So, I want to thank you for that.
Thanks.
Yeah, personally, I was thrilled when we learned of the virtual school going forward. Sounds like you're in good hands already. It sounds like your governance board so far has some quality people on it that have some basic knowledge of education and outside business knowledge as well. I think that's important for our education as well. Do you, at this point, have an idea how many on the government's boards you're going to cap it at? Are you going to go as big as you can, or is it, is that part of the bylaws you're coming up with?
Well, yeah, I don't know the exact number. I do know we're currently looking for a treasurer, so anybody that has a finance background or accounting background would be fantastic to join the board.
Okay, that's good to put out there.
That's one need that we have right now.
Tell your friends. You just did.
Yep. Okay. Okay.
So, I'd like to thank all the parents, and especially like the sounds of the STEM, you know, as the board's electrical engineer. I'm sorry, I was writing too slow. What is Cindy Collins' title again?
So, she's the project coordinator.
Okay.
For the charter school. She's not actually on the governance board, though.
Oh, okay.
She's just, should just be clear, yeah, she's part of the school.
So, project coordinator. Coordinator, okay.
And to be on the board, you can't be a school employee. You can't be paid.
So, the charter, the charter business has definitely a unique set of rules. But the, again, the, not having had a charter school in the district, a lot of this is going to be the brand-new. But part of the uniqueness of it is, again, thinking that if we're going to hopefully have fifty students or up to fifty students, six through twelve, that are part of this, it is somewhat of a pilot, and the purpose of charter schools is to kind of try something. And hopefully, you know, it continues, but also that there, when they try things, if it's, you know, partnerships with businesses or just the way they approach teaching and learning, that that's something that could transfer to the regular school as well. So, it's a unique opportunity for us, and thanks for all you're doing so far.
Just want to do a shout-out here. I'm on the website right now, and it's very well laid out. It's wonderful. So, pats off to the both of you for doing this and your engagement. But I also want to acknowledge Brenda O'Brien for all the heavy lifting on this. I know we've been talking about this for a long, long time, so this is pretty cool. So, thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for all you're doing. Also, as far as district employees, that means the board currently sitting is not able to be on the governance board as well. Correct. So, that's a completely separate board. The district oversees that, but we don't have our hands in that board, just so everyone's aware of that as well. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item D, Instructional Improvement Council Restart Update.
I'm going to hand that over to Tracy.
Thank you. So, what, I think what we're going to be moving forward with is somewhat of a resurrection of something that is actually already in policy. It is called the Instructional Improvement Council, also known as IIC, Michael. Thank you. You're welcome. Basically, for those in attendance or viewing online, it's twenty-two-ten-A, falls under curriculum development. Basically, what this council is, it's under the leadership of the Director of Teaching and Learning, Ms. O'Brien. It is a standing committee. The idea here is that the committee may change from time to time, as far as the makeup, but the areas of membership is always represented. So, I'll just touch upon a couple of the responsibilities, what the composition of the council could look like, just to give everybody an idea of what it is. It's still extremely early in the process, but we are going to move forward with bringing this back. So, some of the responsibilities include, and certainly are not limited to the ones I'm going to mention here, the continual continuous evaluation of selected areas of the district curriculum, establishing priority of areas for revision. There may be some working committees for some selected areas if there's a need for a little bit more of a specialty or focus. If there's any way to determine how best to implement any newly developed revised courses of study, including getting the faculty up to speed, so just to kind of give a sense of what that is. As far as composition of who may be on this council, Mr. Stausland would be an ex officio member. The chairperson of this council would be selected by Mr. Stausland. At least one principal, though, we will ultimately invite all of them to participate. Teachers from each school, or at least each grade, grade level or subject area, a representative from the board, and also at least one representative from the community. I'm sure that last one piques some interest. We will, as we continue to kind of build this out, determine next best actions, those types of things. We'll start to identify anybody who is interested in participating, you know, just kind of that process going forward, and anybody from the community can go ahead and, you know, request their participation. To some degree, we, just by its nature, it could be a little bit larger group. At the same time, we don't want a huge group. You know, it has to still be somewhat manageable in trying to get some of those things that I mentioned, those responsibilities, done and actually move forward with that. But ultimately, I would foresee various reports coming through. Ultimately, if there are any sort of recommendations to move forward, those would come possibly to the curriculum committee, then on to the board. In some cases, they may go directly to the board. All depends on what the subject area is, but we thought we'd mention it now, let everybody know what we're hoping to do with this. And obviously, going forward, we'll provide updates as far as progress to filling all the spots. I know I've heard either from Ms. O'Brien, or actually, I've heard indirectly from a couple of people who are excited about bringing this back, that, and so, I guess that's it, unless there's any questions or if I missed anything.
So, just to be clear, you're not replacing the curriculum committee necessarily. You're using this as a precursor for anything coming to the curriculum committee for final approval. This is kind of the beginning vetting process for all the teachers and the schools and the community and everyone involved.
Exactly, that is correct. If folks recall from a month or so, maybe two months ago now, there are various pilot programs that are going on with the expectation that early next year, there'll be public presentations, more discussion. It's somewhat related to that, in my mind at least, so take that for what it's worth. The council would kind of lead into those pilot programs or be indirectly part of that. And so, that I personally like to continue to see. This is just adding a layer that's kind of bringing in people in the district who have, you know, who are the experts on reading or math or whatever the particular area is, to kind of discuss it. And also, to allow, for instance, members of the community to also be part of that process and provide their perspective, their comments, and kind of be part of that process. But you're correct. Ultimately, the curriculum committee, if you notice, we're referring to it as the curriculum committee, not the ad hoc curriculum committee. The curriculum committee still will exist. If anything, you can kind of think of that as the, from the board's perspective, the first line where we, through the committee, through the board, will actually discuss and take whatever action may be needed.
Well, pre-COVID, IIC met on a regular basis, and they had a set schedule, you know, bi-monthly or monthly on the third Thursday. Have you put together a schedule yet on what that's going to look like?
No, not yet. I mean, this is pretty much the official. I mean, the, this is pretty much the, the official, if you will, kickoff of, of kind of working through all that. Ms. O'Brien, I'm guessing maybe even Mr. Stausland have kind of started reaching out to some people who either were part of the, the IIC earlier to see if they still have interest in participating. As I mentioned, there's also the reach out to principals and some other folks. So it's still for fairly early in the process, but we will ultimately will publicize and start to publicize the information that is, is coming out of theirs in the works and those type of things.
Again, any further questions? Mr. O.
For the members of the curriculum committee automatically on the IIC?
No, based off of the, how the policy currently is written, it's one representative from the board.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Moving down to item E, teacher retention report. Mr. Stausland.
Yes, and Mr. Noack's going to present. This was asked of him a meeting or two ago, just to kind of report out where are teachers when they leave the district? Or where are they going and for, for what reason? So, Mr. Noack.
Thank you. You have in front of you a, a report, a retention report. Over the last six years, including the current 2122 school year, we looked at teacher resignations and specifically noted what the reasons were for those. In some cases, those were exit interviews. In some cases, we based that off of our knowledge and letters of resignation and such. There were 50, what we would call voluntary resignations. And the reasons that we're able to break those down into were relocation, career change, leaving the profession for family reasons and leaving the district for a new teaching position in another district. As you look at the data, you'll see the, the voluntary turnover percentage noted as 2.7 in 1617, 4.1 in 1718, 3.7 in 1819, 0.6 in 1920, 5.5 in 2021, and .4 in 2122. I should note that 2122 is not complete as, you know, we're only a few months in. And most of the data you will see on this chart occurs at the end of, of a school year in terms of people leaving us. So that obviously could change. On a national level, when we talk about teacher turnover, the, the, the average is well above what's noted here. The, the national average is somewhere around 16%. Now that includes 8% leaving of teachers leaving for other districts and then 8% leaving the profession, which would include retirements. I did not include retirements in our data, but you're pretty well aware. On a typical year, we have probably, I would say, what, four to six retirements that occur. So that would elevate our, our turnover a little bit, not much. Some of the numbers you see, the, like the 4.1 would probably go up by one to two percentage points. But the, the relative to our area, there isn't too much comparative data, but our HR group, some years back around 1718, it may, it might have been 1819, did some work in this regard. And they, you know, the, the numbers that you see are very consistent with us. Most districts in our area, the McWans, the Ellenbrooks, the New Berlins, were in that 5% range. So we feel pretty comfortable with where we're at. And, you know, some of this is the result of competition in terms of teachers seeking, you know, more compensation in, in, in different, different districts and such. Interestingly, we've had teachers that have left our district for, you know, other neighboring districts, but have then since come back. We see that quite a bit. There's just far more movement now than there was, say, 10 years ago. And the other thing that's compounded in this is that there are, relative to teacher shortage, universities aren't turning out as many teachers. So not only do you have people moving, but you don't have the surplus of teachers to fill positions. And that will only intensify in the years to come. So, you know, relative to what we see in our district, you'll note, you know, to me, people leaving for family reasons or relocation, when those come through, they're logical, they make sense, you know. Typically, typically teachers that are, it's a very difficult decision for them, but, you know, ultimately they feel comfortable with it. To me, that last column, those leaving for new positions is the one that's sensitive relative to our practices in terms of compensation and, you know, teacher engagement, employee engagement and those kinds of things. So we saw a little bit of a spike in the 2021 school year. My guess is that that was pretty common relative to all of our districts. That was a year we were coming off of COVID or sort of amidst COVID and it was a, a difficult time, obviously. As part of the request that came forward with this, I also included a breakdown of the various departments that we have and where we've had teachers leaving us. I did not get so granular as to break down within each department what those reasons were. We know them for the most part, but as we look at that, there are some areas that stick out. English, for example, there were seven departures as well. Special education has had seven. Now, you know, those are very different departments and I think the reasons are very, the different. I will speak to special education as it being one of those high need areas. And I'll point out that there are measures that we can take based on your actions to deal with those situations in terms of counter offering that we've been given latitude, I think of $3,000 in those situations. Sometimes we're seeing with that particular area, offers that are literally $15,000 more than, than an employee is making. So it's becomes very difficult, but we manage all of our districts. When I meet with our HR directors, we all are singing the same tune. We all talk about the difficult areas that we have and how we deal with them and, and how we, you know, find candidates. So we're, we're committed to continue to look at this kind of information and would welcome your input relative to any measures that we can take. But all in all, we feel pretty good about how our teachers feel in the district. And, you know, I don't say that we should, you know, step back and feel confident and not be concerned about it. It is something that we always have to address and put at the forefront.
Agreed. Any comments, questions?
Mike, thank you so much for doing this. I think I made this request a month ago or so, but thank you for this. This is good information. Hopefully we can keep this thing updated year over year. 1920 school year, .6 voluntary turnover, that is when we were in 100% virtual, I believe. So there's no reason for anyone to leave.
Right.
And then we pivoted. Some districts continued with virtual, but Germantown School District, we went in person. Don't know if that's the reason for the 5.5% spike, but if that's relative in comparison with peer districts, that's okay. The last column, new, new position. I know several years ago, and I don't know the date, but I've got the file someplace archived. We did a comp study based on our conference and also peer districts. I would love to see us revisit that because that could be, provide some information relative to that last column in terms of where we at in terms of compensation. Everyone knows with Act 10, that created a free market out there. Districts can cherry pick and pay what they want to pay. And I'm very concerned about that. I think Germantown School District is, continues to be a destination place for not only moms and dads. You can see by the many homes that are being built in the district, but also for staff as well. They want to work in a nice place and we've got a beautiful place here. But if there is something that we could do to retain more staff, I think we should, the board should look at that for some discussion on the total compensation where we're at. So, but thank you for doing this.
I would welcome it. I would, I would, I think you just said it. It, we have to look at total compensation and we do that, which includes other areas. I think input from our teachers, possible focus groups and things like that. From our less experienced teachers, from our less experienced to our more experienced teachers would be very, very helpful. Because there's, there's, they're just vastly different experiences and the things that they're, that are important to them. I think things that they've experienced over their, you know, years of their careers, it's, it's interesting to hear.
I agree with that, everything Bob said. It's important and I think we're very sensitive as a board, at least since I've been here. Keeping quality teachers is the only way we're going to stay a high performing district. And we're sensitive to the competing marketplace and what's going on around us. And we do pay attention to that. And we've had positions where, you know, there's a higher demand that we've offered more to keep someone or offered more to bring someone in just because that's the way the game is played right now. And we want the best for our kids. So this is part of what we pay attention to. Okay, anyone else? All right, we are on to citizen comments. I will say the same rules apply that we've had at the last several meetings. If anyone has any questions, feel free. But we'll start off, I will announce and then now it's the person on deck. First up, we have Kyle Suppernan and on deck is Jean Mary.
So you can start now if you'd like. So I'm Kyle Suppernan, I'm a seventh grade teacher in the district and the GA representative for tonight. So I'm going to start by asking a few questions. The first deals with some of the busing stuff that's come up recently with the middle school and having students come in from 7:10, changing to 7 o'clock and just kind of where that came from and what kind of evolved with that situation. Why went from 7:10 to 7 o'clock?
I, I would be happy to take your list of questions and get back to you. We don't typically respond at a board meeting. It would take too long for us to, I don't know.
And that's fine.
But we can definitely do that for you.
Thank you. And the second question that would be with the ILC, just do you have an idea of how many teachers you would expect to have on the ILC when it moves forward? And what kind of information and what kind of materials have to go through the ILC in that decision-making process? Are those questions that you're going to get back to me as well?
Correct.
Okay. With that being said, I do want to thank the board in particular for the permit increase this year and last year in terms of negotiations with this, what Mr. Noack had said. I think that goes a long way as compared to a one-time bonus in retaining people like me. It's just kind of recognizing, if nothing else, that our hard work was recognized in the last year and a half, especially last year. I think last year was probably the toughest year of teaching that I've ever had. And I've taught now, this is my 11th year with a combination of hybrid and then going partially hybrid while we're in class and having eight people online as well as having all these virtual kids. And trying to kind of balance that out was incredibly, incredibly difficult to work through in many ways on our own. So I thank you again for that, that permanent recognition, because it does help to retain people like me, because I see being here for the next 25 years. With that being said, one other thing I do want to touch on is just as schools continue to be under the enhanced microscope and putting you in a position that I do not envy saved my life. So I get it. I simply ask that you continue to trust your teachers to make sound professional judgments. Whether it be racial issues, political issues or social issues, our students are already, already involved in and already surrounded by all kinds of information, both bad and good, through their phones, through social media, through all other means. As a district, we have a few ways to deal with these and other issues. One is to simply avoid all concerns because it is easier and less scary to do so. Or we could simply push forward as a district by helping students learn how to interact with these issues, acknowledging these issues exist and learning how to consume information about them to make the best informed decisions. I hope as we continue this journey towards equity in the district, that we continue to take the second option and that you continue to support teachers who are willingly putting themselves in a tough spot like myself by doing this in a professional, age-appropriate, nonpartisan way in the hyper partisan world that we are currently living in. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. Please feel free to let me know of anything that I can address from a teaching perspective, if you wish, or to bring back to the GA as representative for tonight.
Thank you, Kyle. I'll just add, I have two questions that you gave us, the busing and the IIC. Did you have anything else for us?
No, those are the two.
Okay, did you have anything else going forward? Feel free to email any of us and we'll be happy to get you that information. But I will get to the appropriate people and make sure we get that information to you quickly.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Oh, sorry. Jean Mary, on deck, we have Melanie Smythe.
Okay, first of all, I'm sorry, Jean Mary, Germantown. First of all, it was heartening to hear that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards has withdrawn from the National Association. However, it did leave the door open for individual school districts to maintain a relationship with that association. I would ask that the Germantown School Board pass a resolution specifically ending any relationship with this organization that lobbies against parents and against parental rights where students are concerned. Secondly, it seems that CRT, SEL, DEI, sexual orientation mandates, et cetera, many other non-academic topics continue to be a source of distraction in our classroom situations. I've listened to the overemphasis on all of this for many months at the expense of academics in our schools. And I've expressed concerns about this at several meetings. And now the statistics for Wisconsin and Germantown are in. And the downward slide of the Germantown academic achievements mirrors that of the state of Wisconsin. 64% of fourth graders are not proficient in reading. The reading ability of the state's Hispanic students has dropped from first in the nation to 28th. And among black students, Wisconsin is dead last. White students' reading skills fell from sixth in the nation to 27th. This did not happen over the course of one year due to COVID. Math and proficiency has dropped more than 20 points since 2017. English skills have dropped over 16 points over the same period. Less than a third of students are proficient in either subject, English or math. There are more statistics and none of them are good. Clearly, our eye has not been on the academic ball for quite a while. It is well past time to turn our emphasis to math, English, science, civics, history, all of the basics, rather than social, emotional and personal issues that should be handled by parents in the home, not by teachers in the classroom. Thank you.
Melanie, and then on deck we have Alyssa Powell.
Good evening, Melanie Smythe, Germantown. I commend you for remaining open-minded and even handed in the deliberation of issues facing the district. But sometimes I think that you're too nice. An urgent matter is the decline of the standing of the school district in excellence within, as test results compared to other districts. I recently reviewed the standards, standards currently posted on the district and state websites. The 239-page science description is dated November 17th and the 119-page English description, May 2020. Searching for equity, diversity, inclusion, trans, social justice and a few other terms show zero in the science language, but multiple instances in the English description. Why are we following that? The district claims to create its own curriculum. Every time the Director of Learning brings recommendations to the board, they are prepackaged programs costing thousands and often have bits that can't be used due to SEL or CRT components. We still don't know what is being taught in the classrooms. Are the declining test scores due to these prepackaged teaching tools? Why the decline? And don't blame COVID, it was happening before that. Some suggestions may be to make the standards higher and thus Germantown's own. And maybe that's what you're starting to work on. Replace critical thinking with objective thinking. Objective thinking takes politics and subjectivity out and teaches people to be more self-aware. Less politics is good. I'm glad to hear that the compensation is flexible and can be changed. You could rework it to tie teachers, superintendent and director of learning salaries to the test results and whether the scores rise or fall. Pay them 90% of their salary and if test scores meet or exceed standards, give them the final 10%. Where else in the real world are people paid to fail their goals? Reward great work like Kyle. We've seen willful disregard for the board's record. Um, we've seen willful disregard for the board's request and parents' request for transparency. With the lack of posting of information and dragging of feet this year, what is actually being taught? What is being hid? Please tell us more about what you're doing with the education process for students before another year is lost. Um, at some point taxpayers will soon ask for a refund and more students will go elsewhere. If improvements aren't realized, how many students have already been pulled because of S E L and C R T? Um, it still says ad hoc on the website, by the way, it doesn't say curriculum. Um, a note on those behaviors, uh, there's a lack of empathy um in general going on in the world and um, there's a lot of chaos. And I think kids are acting out, social media is a, is a corruption of, of behaviors. And I think that's a really tough situation that you have to deal with. And um, I really hope that you can come up with something that um will help kids overcome because I think that they're being faced with things like government forcing mandates and parents being scared, all sorts of things going on. So I think this is all part of the mix. And it's a tough role that you guys are in, but it's important. So thank you for all of that work around there.
Thank you. Alyssa and then Jenny Price.
Alyssa Palo, Germantown. Um, so along the same lines of academics and curriculum, I previously asked this board and the administration to develop an annual report for our district to have transparency in our academic progress. Many surrounding districts have these reports, including Brookfield, Montevinsville, Arrowhead and Slanger. I've been disappointed to see that we have not started to put something like this together. So I've taken it upon myself, along with the help of a friend, to start looking at our data. Looking at the forward test results from the D P I website. We re, we reviewed data from two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-one focused on grades three through eight. And here is what we found for the proficient and advanced ratings. Our E L A scores have fallen from fifty-seven to forty-five percent. Math scores have fallen from sixty-three to fifty-one percent. Science scores have fallen from seventy to fifty-nine percent. And social studies have fallen from sixty-nine to sixty-one percent. So in three of the four categories, we are seeing a double-digit decrease in our proficiencies for the proficient and advanced students. This to me is embarrassing, it is upsetting. As we're talking about all of this work about how we improve the district. We're not even tracking, at least to my knowledge, based on the emails that I've exchanged. We are not doing any internal measures to track how we're performing. And this data takes a long time to sift through and I personally, as a parent, should not have needed to do this. This should be the administration doing this. And if we want Germantown School District to be a destination. This is very damaging for that. So I think we need to start looking as a district of how do we start transparently showing what we are doing. I have about fifty-six pages of map data results that I will also comb through and put together in a similar fashion. But again, I don't know why a parent needs to spend hours of their time doing this. When we have beautiful COVID graphs every two weeks showing us how we're doing. I couldn't care less about the COVID numbers. I would like to see how we are performing objectively and academically, both internally and across the state. Um, lastly, the curriculum transparency, there continues to be very little of it. When I checked the district website again today, it's a two-page, high-level overview of what is very vague. It does not give you a day-by-day or a week-by-week breakdown of what clear content is being presented in the dish, in the classroom. Or it connects you to a website where it is a prepackaged example of what's being done. So as we have declining scores and no transparency in the classroom, I think we need to reexamine what we're really doing. Thank you.
Jenny and then Richard Bian.
Jenny Price, Germantown. Um, I am actually here to talk about the household positive test quarantine policy that's in place for students. Um, I'm asking for it to be stopped. I mean, really, it's kind of utter nonsense when you think about it. Uh, we all know that just because one person in a household gets ill, that does not mean that everyone is going to get ill. It just, it's just not going to happen. Um, all this policy is doing is creating a huge disservice to the healthy kids that are forced to stay home just because someone in their household is sick. Um, they're missing school, they're missing their schoolwork. Special education students are not getting their services that the school is required to provide um through the I E Ps and five oh four plans. They're not. I know that personally because my son was forced to stay home, healthy, never got sick, didn't get his services. I said it at the last meeting, I'll say it again now. If you're going to force quarantine healthy kids because of COVID, then you need to force quarantine healthy kids if someone in the household has the flu, a cold or a stomach bug. I mean, that's only fair, right? I mean, really, now if you're not willing to do that, then you have to stop doing it for COVID. Um, please just let healthy kids come to school, stop making them stay home for absolutely no reason. As of last Friday, point six percent of students district-wide had a positive, positive test, point six percent. Less than one percent. Now, how many healthy kids are forced to stay home because of that point six percent? I bet you any amount of money, it's more than point six percent. Um, I would like to see that number. Um, does anybody have it? I would love to see that number. I think maybe you should start adding that number to the COVID dashboard as well as the positive cases. It would be very interesting to see that number. Um, I do want to thank you for all you're doing. I know it's not easy having people coming at you from both sides, so we just want, you know, fairness and choice. So thank you.
Richard, and then on deck, we have Sarah Larson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Richard Bian. I live in Germantown. Um. I've sent you a couple emails in the past week. I hope you guys look at them at least. Anyway, the latest one, which I sent to you today. Um, at numbers from the Department of Health and Human Services. Vars system, their Evers reporting system. Now, when you look at these numbers that I sent you, you, you have to keep in mind. They all, they found out that only, since it's a voluntary system. They found out that only about one percent of the actual numbers get reported in bars. So you have to multiply the numbers, the, the numbers you see by one hundred to get the real impact. So for the COVID in this country, COVID vaccines in this country. The real, the, the ones that were reported was eight hundred seventy-five thousand. So what does that mean? And you multiply that by hundred. Over eighty million people have had an adverse reaction to receiving the COVID vaccine. Eighty million, but you don't hear that on the news, do you? There it, now I'm going to give you some real numbers. What's makes it to the VAR system? Eighteen thousand deaths. Ninety-two thousand hospitalizations. Ninety-seven thousand urgent care visits. Under thirty-six thousand doctor visits. Eleven thousand bells palsy. Three thousand miscarriages. It really messes up people that, that way. Nine thousand heart attacks. Now remember, you gotta multiply these by a hundred. Permanent, permanent disabilities. Twenty-nine thousand. Now. Because of what I found in my research. There is no way, there is no way I could recommend any of these vaccines to my twelve grandchildren. I mean, it is so risky. None of us, none here on this board, I don't, none of us know what are the long-term effects of a child, a young person taking this vaccine. What's going to happen to them ten years from now? Are they going to be infertile? I don't know because the studies aren't out there. We've all experienced the negative effects that online learning and hybrid learning have had. My daughter is a teacher. She said that was the worst time trying to do hybrid teaching was a terrible, she, she felt like a babysitter. That's what she kept saying. Of, so online learning and hybrid learning has had the negative effects academically and socially on our students. So please do not mandate unsafe, unsafe COVID vaccines for students to attend in-person schools. Thank you.
Sarah Larson and Jody Graff, on deck.
Hi, Sarah Larson, Germantown. Couple of random items here. I apologize if I missed it during the building committee. When you get to the point of voting on the dishwasher at the full board level. Could you just refresh on what the cost of a brand-new dishwasher was? As well as what the current life expectancy is of the one that we're buying the heater for. I'm just kind of curious about the cost benefit analysis. So when you get to that, if you could just provide that information. Um, the next item is uh the information that has been posted on the website about professional development. As you hear recurring, parents are thirsty for information. There's the phrase trust but verify. I think some trust has been broken and so there's a lot of verifying that has to happen before trust is rebuilt. And so we do know that professional development happens at the building level as was witnessed by the materials presented at MacArthur. So I would be asking that with this transparency, all of the building staff meetings, agendas are posted with the, the associated information because we know that building leaders do professional development for their staff. Um, I'm glad to see the I I C is coming back. Um, what I do know from having served on it when I was a board member, it meets directly after school, which is not necessarily a viable time for most parents to be able to keep track of what's going on. With that really being a subcommittee of the curriculum committee. I would like to see that that is livestreamed as well as recorded. Because as you can tell, that it fits right in with what the parents are curious about and striving for the information. Um, Tracy, you had mentioned something about pilot programs happening. And you kind of implied like maybe these pilot programs were happening already with the board not having visibility to them, like pilots that would be coming to the curriculum committee. Um, could you comment whether there are pilot programs going on that the board doesn't know about?
No, the, the board knows about them. They, you can go back to the curriculum committee videos. And I also provided updates during the board meetings.
I just wanted to, it, because it kind of came across like maybe there was, and okay. All right, so I would say the more visibility you can give to what's happening with that committee. Obviously, you don't want it to be unwieldy with the twenty community members wanting to participate. If you video them, hold it in the boardroom where community can come and listen and have your agendas posted. I think you are going to save yourself a lot of headache and parents questioning things down the line. Thanks for what you do.
And last up, we have Jody.
Good evening, Jody Graff. Um, I just wanted to share that I loved all the good news in the student representative report. It's really great to hear the parties and the gratitude and Veterans Day celebration recognitions in our schools. The K five A B C fashion show sounds super cool. So congrats to G S D for restoring so much normalcy in our schools and letting kids have fun again. I'm also glad to hear of the strict consequences and the high bar that we've set for poor student choices. And that you guys are trailblazing custom solutions with high expectation for transparency and what you end up developing. And um lastly, just wanted to give a little, one more time hurrah for preparing yourselves tonight to give teachers equal opportunity to determine their comfort and ability to work if they're healthy and symptom-free with the household positive case. And showing trust in your staff to not discriminate against them for personal choices. Thank you.
All righty, moving on to item five, approval of minutes, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, Board of Education and also closed session. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty Board of Education meeting minutes as well as closed session meeting minutes.
Any discussion? See none, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item six, Finance Committee, Mr. Lo.
Yes, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening. We approved the vouchers for this last month. We also bring to the board with a positive recommendation. Um, number one, Nalco Electric Incorporated not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars funded from the Food and Nutrition Department Fund fifty to install electric wiring and panels for a dishwasher booster heater. And number two, Hobart Milwaukee not to exceed ten thousand nine hundred and six dollars. Funded from the Food and Nutrition Department Fund fifty budget to purchase, purchase a dishwasher booster heater for the Kennedy Middle School Kitchen.
Okay, that comes with more of positive recommendation. Do we have discussion? Mr. Lo.
Well, um, yes, what Don mentioned uh in the building committee meeting, so sorry, I might be stepping on toes here. But uh he said that the uh, the new booster heater would last about as long as the existing dishwasher. And it was likely that the uh, now he didn't say the number of years on that. But it was likely that when the dishwasher eventually failed, the new dishwasher would include its own booster heater. In this way, the wiring is already in place for it. So we should be in good shape for a number of years yet with this uh, these purchases.
I believe he said the water heater is a ten-year investment. Yeah, I wondered. And then the water washer would die as well.
Right.
Thank you. Uh, to serve point, um, did we do any analysis in terms of? I know the reason why we're installing the booster heater because we can't, we have to get, we have to uh ensure proper temperature for sanitation. I get that. But have we researched just buying a whole new dishwasher and the cost associated with that? Or do you need both?
Yeah, I can jump in. You need both. The, the booster is a separate, completely separate unit that pushes the water in, so it's not, you've got your dishwasher and then you also have the booster, two separate pieces.
Thank you.
Yeah, my guess on that would be that new dishwasher would be a lot more expensive because it includes the water heater booster as well, so you get the combined unit.
Correct. Learned something I didn't know. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, see none? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item, or go ahead, Mike.
Yes, uh, the next item is uh the Finance Committee brings forward uh with a positive recommendation to the full board to award Morton Buildings a contract not to exceed fifty-two thousand four hundred and nine dollars and award Brainerd Excavating Incorporated a contract not to exceed seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars for a total of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars funded from the Building and Grounds Fund ten budget to build a thirty-foot by sixty-foot pole barn. To build a thirty foot by sixty foot pole barn at Germantown High School.
Okay, that comes with more with positive recommendation, any discussion? Okay, see none, all those in favor? That passes.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lo, moving on to Building Committee, Mr. Pollak.
So we received our usual update from Mr. Erickson regarding Buildings and Grounds Fund ten projects and facility services. I'll let, I'll let folks review the the video itself once that is available for for all of the details, but just to highlight. A few other things that were brought up. There was a short discussion on the Commercial Consultants Group Report. That group provides us a service in which they, they serve as as kind of an expert, if you will, with regards to roofing and a few other things. Whereby they, they do some inspection, they do some review and oversight on our behalf with regards to. Costs and materials and some of those things, and so. We will, there will be actually going through. All the buildings over the, I think, I think the gentleman said next week or starting next week to do their inspections and they'll do another one in the spring. Make sure everything is in good order and aging properly and any other sort of issues. Will address those, it's our, also been requested to see what else they might be able to help us with. With regards to some of the referendum buildings. That that sort of thing to see if we can leverage them to to kind of be an independent eye, if you will. Just to see, just to make sure that we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's with regards to maintenance. Don also provided a referendum building report summarizing some of the good things that came out of. The referendum, he did identify. Three outstanding issues that that still are in process, the the pool deck. There's a leak at county line that that is being investigated and looking at, being looked at in the the gym floor at Amy Bell. I asked the question of Don, you know, are are these the big three, are these the big issues that? That still remain from from the referendum work and he said, yes, basically, of course, there's always things that will pop up, but. Those are the big three and hopefully we'll get some resolution with regards to those sooner rather than later. We were also provided a brief update on the Germantown High School Greenhouse Phase One. With some of the the fact that there has been some fundraising and some preliminary work with regards to making sure. Once again, we're kind of dotting our i's, crossing our t's. This, before we truly start moving forward, just to make sure there aren't any unexpected impediments that it might kind of prevent us from. Moving forward with the greenhouse and it was also mentioned to you that. A group with within leadership Germantown has taken this on as a project also, so. Paraphrase Mr. Southland, it's currently it is a district or school project, but it could ultimately turn into a little bit of a community project. Which is always a good thing and to to leverage those contacts we might have out in the community. Lastly, just to mention. Mr. Kinky, who has served as our committee citizen. Resigned that position, so we we are in the process of looking for a replacement for him. Information will go out on the website. Community members who are interested in in serving on on this committee can reach out to Mr. Erickson or myself. And we'll kind of take it from there.
Very good, any questions? Okay. Moving on to old business, item A, quarantine requirements for students and staff where there is a positive case at home.
Sure, I mean, this this was asked to be. Put back on the agenda, currently right now, if a staff member has a positive. Member at home. Or yeah, someone in their household with a positive, if they're not showing symptoms, they can, they can work, or they can come to school, but that's right now. If there's a, if you're a student and there's a positive member at home, you're asked to quarantine.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion.
Can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
Okay, vaccinated and unvaccinated students, if healthy and showing no symptoms. Are free to come to school with a positive case of COVID nineteen in their home. Parents will make the final decision to send their students to school or not. And included here, I think Brett just covered it, but just to make sure we've got it covered. Vaccinated and unvaccinated teachers, if healthy and showing no symptoms are free to come to work. With a positive case of COVID nineteen in their home.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second discussion.
I have a few things to ask, one, do we have any information on what household spread data, any households press? Spread data is, and then two, is this board willing to pivot on that if by doing this, our numbers go skyrocket? We keep bringing things back and forth and back and forth, right now, we're on a course where things are working.
Yeah, I I'll just say that. This is still a journey that unfortunately we're still on and we started this almost two years ago. And this board has, based on the atmosphere, based on the data, we have pivoted before. And we've pivoted.
And I've been here with that, I'm not denying. Kinda, kinda going back and forth and this and that. And right now, I feel like we're on a good trend, so I'm just trying to say, do we coast with this right now and then? That's my question for you guys, are we coasting or do you just wanna say no, we're all in, let's do this?
Yeah, the reason why I'm gonna vote for this is because, you know. And to that gentleman, he's no longer here, I mean, I don't believe in government overreach and mandates. It's a personal choice between a mom, a dad, and his or her doctor. I'm vaccinated, I got my booster, I travel internationally, I'm a unique situation. But there's been a lot of breakthrough cases out there. And no, we don't have, I I don't have the data in terms of. Specific to Germantown School District of how many breakthrough cases there are, those that are vaccinated and coming back. So I would just argue that to what Michael said. I put a lot of trust on our parents, our moms and dads. If the kids are sick, stay home, if they're not sick, whether it's from COVID or the flu or the cold. Stay home if you're sick, but if you're not, you've got a family member in the household, come to school. Then, if we see the numbers spike, of course, we're gonna do, we're gonna have further discussion and conversation.
I'll I'll just say. At our weekly meetings with the Health Department, with the area superintendents, that the question about how many? How many students in a home become positive, if there's a positive case in the home and. Early on, it was. Ten, twenty percent if they were. Unvaccinated, which was primarily then if they were under, under twelve for a lot of them. And then, and they haven't done, they haven't been tracking the numbers like that, so there's not like hard numbers, this is anecdotal. The the two health peoples, one from Wasaki County, one from Washington, from Washington County. Believe, just from their. Off knowledge is that it's about forty percent now, if you're vaccinated, become positive and sixty percent if you're unvaccinated. Again, it's not a hard study, that's just what they, what they shared.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll be voting yes for it this evening like Bob because we've got one parent that spoke to us here tonight. Jenny saying that, you know, it's it's terrible having a healthy student having to be kept home. And you've all heard me say the school board is about educating students. It's not about expelling them, for example. So these students aren't exactly expelled, but they are held at home when they're healthy. And they're not quite getting the same education if they were in school, so. I think when we made this decision, I don't know what it is now, about six weeks ago, the data. We had then might have justified it and now it's a certain amount of time later and I think we're in good shape and. I don't think this is going to upset anything at all. Except it'll make students that are healthy able to come to school and I trust that parents will do the right thing. And if there's any sign of. An issue that the student is ill, it might be as simple as a cold, but I'm guessing the parent will probably keep that student home. Just in case it is COVID, so I think parents will probably overreact a little bit, but if the student is healthy. I'm guessing they're coming to school and that's what we're asking for.
And I'll just say, Brett, we do have as part of your return to school plan, that if the numbers do spike. Administration will take appropriate action, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I guess for me personally, my hope would be that the parents, if you have a sick kid at home. And you're thinking, should I send my child or not, you would at least take the effort to get a COVID test for that child before you send them in, the one thing we've learned about COVID. Whether you've had the vaccine or not, you can be a carrier and be a spreader of it. So you have to be aware of that and cognizant of that, if you're gonna send your child to school, so a test would eliminate that possibility. Not all families have the ability to segregate their homes so that if they have one sick child or a sick parent, to keep everybody away from them. If that's a possibility, I can understand where a parent could be having their child tested and sending it in the school and have no issues. And that child would never get sick or spread the virus as well. As far as my personal opinion on mandates, I am not in favor of mandates in any way, shape or form. And I don't think we wanna do that, I'm also in favor of consistency. And I think we need to treat everyone consistence consistently, we know that you can spread the virus whether you've had the vaccine or not. So that is kind of a wash, you have no, no control, you can get the virus whether you've had the vaccine or not. So either way, you're either protected or not. There's not a whole lot of difference for me personally, and I don't think the board has any interest moving forward. I'm happy to see that the vaccine mandate is actually going through the courts and they're dealing with it. As far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't have to deal with it at this level and I have literally no intention of bringing a vaccine manic mandate. To anyone in Germantown and I don't think the board would agree with that, that we're not gonna push a mandate on anyone to get the vaccine.
Hey Brian, there is a, there is a, someone has a motion written up right now to deal with. The vaccine mandate and it's a, we will not mandate. That person is holding on to it until the appropriate time or until it's needed. So right now, we're just kind of sitting on it because there's no reason to bring it forward, we're not being forced to have a mandate right now. But my intention would be to. You know, bring that forward at the appropriate time if required.
If we have the power, absolutely.
Right, it's, I I believe it's a local control issue. So that's why it's written, it's ready to go, we're just holding it. Until it's needed, hopefully, we never have to bring it. Forward to the full board.
Anyone else?
I'll, I'll jump in, I. I would, I would have classified myself when I first read through this, it was kind of middle of the road, I was gonna ask. Probably very similar question. Or questions that Amanda did. You know, ultimately, my view on all this is that I want our classrooms and I want our schools to be. Open, I want our kids in the classroom. And so, because that supersedes everything else in my opinion, I, I personal experience with hybrid and everything else and. For my kids, it, for two out of the three, it just did not work, so that's why. I carry it personal, but also from from the board perspective, that 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 is paramount to me. I, I'm going to vote yes for this, but. At the same time, I would just like to stress. Mr. Stausland and and everybody else, you know, keep an eye on this, cuz. While we, well, I agree with much of what's been said. The the fact of the matter is, is we we don't really know what could happen, right? And so we do have those things in place and we have had to implement them as far as. Shifting to virtual for class or making that available at the class level because of cases in in a classroom, so. That would be my only concern, you know, is is we we do need to monitor this ultimately, and since it's brought up. I I do, just to reiterate that I have zero interest in a mandate of the vaccine, I've mentioned it before. So my opinion certainly has not changed, I I view that as a very personal choice between families. Parents, the children and and their physician to to discuss and ask their questions and. Make that decision on their own, cuz. I, I certainly don't feel like I'm in any position to tell any of you or any of them or anybody watching online, you have to do this, so.
I think my biggest hang up or question is, are we providing safety for all of our kids, right? Like, that's the biggest thing, cuz that's what our job is, are we providing a safe environment for college students?
I I'm leaving it up for the parents, I think the parents need to be responsible in this, I'm very hopeful that they are. That they're keeping close eye, temperature checks, whatever they need to do to make sure they're doing the outside testing. Before, I mean, we know kids come to school sick, unfortunately, that's a reality in our school district, we see it every day. Where parents, because of daycare childcare issues, they send their sick kid to school, I'm hopeful in this case that that is not the case, that parents are responsible.
If I could real quick, cuz we are still required to send a negative COVID test in with our kids if they are sick and have two symptoms before they can come back. So. That's still in play, correct?
If they've got, if they left for symptoms, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just wanna verify.
And Amanda, I'll just add that if you follow the data, you look at the numbers for kids. They are. They are not at risk if they get COVID, outside of those that are at risk. And the moms and dads for those kiddos that already are at risk, they're gonna take extra mitigation in place.
It's our job to think about all of the ins and outs, right, so not trying to challenge anybody, just trying to get everybody to think about.
Wonderful conversation, so.
Okay, there's nothing further, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item nine, new business. Final twenty 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 two professional and technical support staff and administrative wage adjustments, Mr. Noack. Ready?
Yeah.
Sure. Similar to when Mike Noack brought the teacher twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Recommendation to the board for a wage increase. This is for our other three groups, which include professional, technical, support staff and administrators. It follows along the same lines of the one point eight one, which is CPI for last year. And then the one point two three, which is CPI for this year, so it's consistent with the teachers. This again is within the budget that was passed by the board for this year and last year. That we are considering taking it out of the fund balance that was. That we have the increase of fund balance at the end of this year, so those have both been spoke about and brought to the board in previous meetings. So today we are asking to get these approved so people can move forward with. Cutting the checks, even though we don't cut checks.
Alright.
Any questions from Mike Noack or I?
Alright, we're looking for a motion on this? Okay, I'll entertain.
I'd like to move. Motion to approve a one point eight one percent pay rate increase as presented for the twenty twenty. Twenty twenty one year effective July first, twenty twenty and a one point two three percent pay rate increase as presented for the. Twenty twenty one slash twenty twenty two year effective July first of twenty twenty one.
Second.
Any discussion? See none, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes, moving on to item B, discussion and action to approve measure of academic profit, pro progress. I'm gonna eat some progress, map subscription, and so Brian.
Thank you, this is just an annual renewal of the measures of academic progress that we use in grades three through tw- or three through eight.
Thank you. This is just an annual renewal of the measures of academic progress that we use in grades three through tw- or three through eight. And again, you'll see just a little bit higher number of licenses that we need to account for the increase enrollment and then that subsequently means just a little bit more increase in the total amount. So, per license, it did not go up.
Good. Just as a personal reference, I in the past was not in favor of the MAP testing. I'm not a fan of standardized testing in any way. We have learned over the years that this is a good gauge to be able to see how our students are performing and the ones that need help, that we can help them to get them back up to speed. And with COVID and all the other reasons that people are behind right now, I think we need this as a gauge to help us understand where we're at and where our students are at so that we can get the help where it's needed. That's my take on it. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the MAP renewal for twenty twenty two as presented. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, one question, Brenda, and thank you for bringing this forward. How long have we had MAP in place?
Oh, goodness. Well, this is my ninth year and I think we had it just a few years before I started, so well over ten years.
Cool. Does this have a a metric component so that we could produce metrics year over year?
Yes, it does.
Okay. We heard from a constituent tonight about our lack of transparency in this space. I'm just wondering if, is there a way that we can, you know, run a report to find out where we're at just for our awareness and also for the PD's awareness as well?
Yes, we could run several different reports.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That passes. Item C, discussion and action to approve donations, Mr. Sausland.
Thank you. I would ask the board to accept a donation of a MEED ETX ninety telescope valued at five hundred and fifty nine dollars from an anonymous donor to be used during the nighttime telescope viewings for Germantown High School students supporting the Earth and Space Science Program.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to thank the donor for their generosity and approve the donation as presented.
Second.
Bob, second. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That passes. I intend to entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? We are adjourned at eight forty three. Thank you all for coming and drive home safely.